Stay here. Because then we can go right into the video.
Okay.
Wait, because when I finish this line.
Okay, okay.
We're gonna do this here.
Yeah, I love them.
Okay, okay.
We might be able to come in.
Did we retire about three?
Did we rehire five?
Are we gonna go?
Who we miss?
Jerry?
Jerry.
No, Oliver's not gonna be here. Oliver's not gonna be here for a minute down.
And then John will be next to you.
Yeah, that's right. Thank you, man.
Oh, I just saw your message.
Yeah, well, I just told him, sorry. I live long though.
So is Bobby.
Be nice to me. You got time? Stop right there. I don't want that bad. Kareemah, you ready? Good evening. Would you please rise? The Monday, April 22nd, common council meeting is now in session. Our invitation is by Councilman Jake Teshka. Thank you.
Father, we thank you for this day. We thank you for the generations of people who are here in support of our city and support of their community. But we ask your guidance tonight in our actions. We ask that you would bless this room, the people in it, and bless the actions that we take, that they may reach far beyond this room and touch our city and our county and our state. But we just ask that you would protect us tonight, be with all those who are hurting, who are lost, who are homeless. But we just ask your blessing on those people. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen. Please stand. Join us and pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Now you can sit. Sit. If you would, please turn your cell phones to silent. That includes Randy. Kelly?
Randy's here.
Ms. Fowler, roll call, please.
Councilmember Preston? Here. Councilmember McBride?
Present.
Councilmember Broden?
Here.
Councilmember Teshka?
Here.
Councilmember Davis is excused. Councilmember Boyd?
Here.
Councilmember Gavin Furley is excused as well. Vice President White?
Present.
President Scott?
Present.
Seven present.
Thank you. Point out subcommittee amendments, please.
To the common council of the city of South Bend, the subcommittee has inspected the amendments of the April 8, 2019, meeting of the common council impossible to be correct. Therefore, we recommend the same be approved.
Move for approval?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Thank you. Currently, there is no special business. There is no report from city offices. Don't know who's from the mayor's office? Oh, hello, Jane Miller? And Jamie Morgan. Thank you. We have no committee at the whole. We'll move to, and no third reading, so we'll move straight to resolutions. Ms. Fowler, would you please read 1923?
1923. A resolution confirming the adoption of declaratory resolutions designating certain areas within the city of South Bend, Indiana, commonly known as 4373 Ameritech Drive, South Bend, Indiana, 46628, as an economic revitalization area for purposes of a seven year real property tax abatement for Hopkins Property of South Bend LLC.
Thank you. Is there a presenter?
Yes. Good evening, Councilmember Dan Buckenmeyer, Director of Business Development from the Department of Community Investment, 14th floor of this building. Just real quickly, looking at the two we have, we have two phase-ins for pieces of property that are currently contributing just over $7,000 per year to the tax rolls. At the end of these investments, theirs and ours, these properties will contribute over $700,000 per year to the tax rolls by our estimates, so 100 times over improvement in the investment and in the tax rolls. We're gonna start with, as was noted, with Hopkins Properties, also known as Truck Centers International. They are headquartered near St. Louis, but they are current resident in South Bend over on Sample Street. This will consolidate and grow their operations. They currently have about 42 jobs which will be retained, but by moving to this new location right at the corner of the bypass and the tollway and building this 100,000 square foot roughly facility, gorgeous facility, they will add another 20 jobs at least to the, I'm sorry, 30 jobs to South Bend's community. They're good-paying jobs. They are mostly diesel technicians and those sorts of jobs. It's over a $17.8 million private investment, and again, we are providing them with a seven year tax abatement phasing in their tax expense over that time. And I think that pretty much sums it up.
Thank you.
The petitioner, Tyler Yates and Rich Deal are here to represent the petitioner. If you have any questions for myself or them.
Would the petitioner come up and give a brief statement, and then we'll go into questions from council. Thank you. Name and address.
Good evening, Mr. President, members of the council. My name is Rich Deal from Barnes &amp; Thornburg with offices at 100 North Michigan Street here in South Bend. I'm pleased to join Tyler Yates, Vice President of Truck Centers, to request your favorable consideration and hopeful support tonight. I want to thank Dan and the Department of Community Investment Department as well for kind of laying out the background of this project for you. As Dan noted, this is a significant investment of over $18 million to facilitate a relocation and expansion for truck centers. It's gonna enable them to increase employment by at least 30. Actually, projections are probably a little bit higher than that and allow them to better serve their customers, which is actually the all kind of truck distribution in this part of the state. So we appreciate your consideration and welcome any questions you might have.
Thank you. Any questions from council? Mr. Preston?
Could you tell us just very quickly about, there was some community benefit that we discussed, and I'd just like to have that reiterated for the record, the work that you're doing with the job training, the wages, the kind of legacy that you have in this community with your employees?
Sure, I'm happy to answer. Actually, it's been an honor for me to work with and represent truck centers. It's a third generation in ownership of truck centers. Currently, truck centers throughout the Midwest is over 720 employees strong, and I'll let Tyler give the actual statistics, but the longevity and commitment of employees is by far above average on just the length of service that people have wanted to stay with and serve truck centers. And that's because truck centers treats its employees with utmost respect, actual investment in training, the future, as well as very competitive compensation. And this opportunity for truck centers facility here is one in which they can also emulate something they've done in Troy, Michigan, which is to have their own in-house training center where they can bring in and invite graduates from high school and other vocational schools, veterans and others who may want to get into the diesel tech business and facilitate that opportunity through training on-site, which is very significant for this type of equipment for the manufacturers represented by truck centers.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Seeing none. Thank you, gentlemen.
No, thank you.
We'll open up to the public. Anyone wishing to speak in favor of?
Is there a public to confirm?
Yep. Anyone wishing to speak in favor of 1923, please come to the podium. Seeing none. Anyone wishing to speak against 1923, please come to the podium. Thank you. Please state your name and address.
Hi. Judith Riblowski, 515 South Mead Street, South Bend, Indiana. Good evening. Happy Earth Day. Happy Earth Day.
Same to you.
A doubleheader today. This is a seven-year abatement. How much money are we talking that will be abated over seven years?
We'll respond. They'll have a rebuttal as soon as you're done.
Okay. Because, you know, we have a big poverty population in South Bend. I heard 54% of our households just don't have enough money to get by, living week to week. And then we have a lot of people that are really in a poverty level besides that. So I think we need to start thinking of abatements from the taxpayers that are here in the city, not as the taxpayers are investors providing this abatement or stakeholders. We need to think of us being bankers and ask for some collateral. And are there some stipulations? I'd like to know about those for the contract for this abatement. And so if it's a seven-year abatement, so one-seventh of the amount be put up as collateral, collateral, just like banks do, or they did when I worked in a bank, at St. Joe Bank here downtown. And then, after one year, if they haven't met the contract guidelines that they were supposed to meet, they have to give up that collateral deposit kind of thing. So that's my suggestion.
Okay, thank you. Is there anyone else wishing to speak against?
Good evening. My name is Mary Ellen O'Connell. I live at 129 West North Shore Drive. I also teach international environmental law at Notre Dame Law School, and I'm here because it's Earth Day, and I'm really puzzled and disappointed to see that the city, when we're about to consider a resolution against climate change, in support of the city working against climate change, that we would give up our tax dollars for a project that is certainly not part of the green economy. It is part of old tech, diesel truck engines. I'd much rather see our funds go to support training in the green economy. Also, this description of a beautiful new facility is swayed with asphalt, which is a greenhouse gas emitting substance. There is, we have so many brown space areas throughout the city, that would be at least one step in favor of using our tax dollars to redevelop already lighted sites, but this is not a green project. And I oppose it as a taxpayer and somebody who's very interested in seeing the health of our city expand. Whenever you say job retraining, job expansion, people say yes, but it's time in 2019 with climate change at a life-threatening level to say no to old tech, yes to green projects, and really moving the city. It will be a contradiction in terms to try to support a resolution in favor of combating climate change if tax dollars are abated for this project. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, Ms. Buckenmeyer, you have a five-minute rebuttal.
Just real briefly, to answer some of the first questions, there were questions about the investment, the commitments, and so on. So the way tax abatements work, there really isn't a net loss, it's a net gain. If we consider doing nothing in this situation over the next 10 years, these properties are currently paying 6,500 roughly dollars, excuse me, a year in taxes. So if you look out a 10-year horizon, and that's 65,000 added to the tax rolls. If we enable this project, if we help them to invest and grow in South Bend, it will actually add $2 million in taxes during that same 10-year period. So the do-nothing, not-invest versus support is not a loss. It is an absolute net gain and impressive one. Again, there were questions about folks in poverty and so on, and I think there's arguably no better way to raise folks up than to increase the number of available jobs, the opportunities for folks to get training at a training facility for, you know, the type of jobs that we're talking about here that are very good-paying jobs and can help to achieve our regional goals of raising the median household income levels and so on. As for, you know, I can't punish a company for locating on a highway where all of our trucks, the way they are today, are driving by. We all want a greener economy, but, and I'm certain that they will evolve as the market evolves, but today, I think they're doing a great job of servicing those vehicles that are out there and are passing our community every day and then bringing some of that income into our community. So I think it's a commendable project, so.
Thank you. And I'll remind the audience, today, these are two confirmings for 1923 and 1927. We actually heard these two weeks ago, and they were approved unanimously by this body. They have to, by state law, come back before us for a second confirming on this, and that's what we're doing here tonight. So I just want everybody to know that part, because they might not have been around last week. So with that, the public portion is closed. We turn it back to council for recommendation. I'm hoping that this be confirmed. Second, Ms. Fowler, roll call.
Councilmember Preston?
Aye.
Councilmember McBride?
Aye.
Councilmember Broden?
Aye.
Councilmember Teshka?
Aye.
Councilmember Boyd?
Aye.
Vice President White?
Aye.
President Scott?
Aye.
Seven ayes.
Thank you. Would you please read 1927?
1927. A resolution confirming the adoption of a declaratory resolution designating certain areas within the city of South Bend, Indiana, commonly known as Ignition Park, South Bend, Indiana, 466, an economic revitalization area for purposes of an eight-year real property tax abatement for Catalyst 3 LLC.
Thank you. Is there a presenter?
Yes, Dan Buckenmeyer, Director of Business Development, DCI, 14th floor of this building. So this is an exciting addition to the Ignition Park facility, built kind of on the ashes of the former Studebaker complex. We will see, we've got Catalyst 1 and 2 in place, as everyone knows. This will be Catalyst 3, but it serves a very important purpose. It will not only be larger than the other two at about 82,000, or, sorry, 83,000 square feet. It is being built to retain hundreds of high-quality jobs in South Bend, and we're very excited to be able to serve that purpose and do it here in Ignition Park. It's a $16 million project, be a very attractive building along with Catalyst 1 and 2, and in keeping with the planning for Ignition Park and so on. Again, I'll give the same, if you look out over a 10-year horizon in this case, yes, we are phasing in the taxes to allow the, excuse me, the tenant company to get some of the benefits of that which come through with a triple-net lease. It allowed them to stay and not leave for other potential pastures, greener or otherwise, and stay in South Bend and keep these jobs in South Bend. Over that 10-year horizon, right now, that property that I showed pays about 1,300 bucks a week, I'm sorry, per year, and in taxes. We anticipate, by our estimates, it will pay over 1.1 million in taxes after the phases take place. And again, 500 retained jobs. We are proud of the project and excited to get it underway. Both of these will get underway very quickly with your support. Jeff Smoke is here from GOC to answer any questions as well.
Thank you. Go ahead and name and address.
Good evening. Jeff Smoke, 112 West Jefferson. I think Dan did a great job explaining the project. You all are familiar with it. Just to highlight, it is keeping 500 jobs here in South Bend. It's over a $16 million investment and helps improve. Ignition Park can give us the momentum we need to keep going forward.
Thank you. Any questions from council? Seeing none. We'll open up the public. Anyone wishing to speak in favor of 1927, please come to the podium.
Jason Bedicki, Critchlev, 38, 22 West Ford Street. Couple of weeks ago, I got to attend the Erum Village Neighborhood Park Association meeting, and they are absolutely ecstatic about this project in their neighborhood, which is not often the case when you hear about a lot of traffic coming to a particular neighborhood. But when you go out to Indian Avenue and you remember what it used to be like with a lot of small businesses, you know, they see this as an opportunity to maybe bring some of those breakfast lunch restaurants back to the area, because now you're gonna have a lot more people who are gonna need places to eat and places to shop. So this is absolutely the kind of win-win project we need as a city. You know, I have office space at Catalyst 1, and it's a beautiful place out there as well. And it's kind of interesting that, you know, Ignition Park started with one vision for what it could be, and it's kind of gone a whole different direction, but that's okay. That's the kind of flexibility we need to be able to compete for jobs this day and age, and it's great to see Prescany and Great Lakes Capital make this kind of investment to stay here when they had so many other options at their disposal. So if we have to bait taxes for a few years to make this happen, this is the kind of thing we need to do. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak in favor of 1927, please come to the podium.
Councilmember McBride?
Aye.
Councilmember Broden?
Aye.
Councilmember Teshka?
Aye.
Councilmember Boyd?
Aye.
Vice President White?
Aye.
Councilmember Preston?
Aye.
President Scott?
Aye.
Seven ayes.
Thank you. Ms. Fowler, would you please read 1933?
1933. A resolution of the common council concerning climate recovery and our commitment to development of a climate action plan aimed at greenhouse gas reduction for the city of South Bend and to support other climate-related emissions.
Thank you. Are there presenters today?
Yes, there's several.
Okay, and they are?
Myself, co-sponsor Joe Broden, Councilmember Teshka, and Councilmember Karen White, and if we might request to stay at our seats.
Okay. Please give your name and addresses for the record.
Joe Broden, 201 West North Shore, South Bend, Indiana.
Thank you.
Jake Teshka, 2419 Teshka Drive.
Karen White, 1912, Mail Barn Way, South Bend.
Thank you. Please proceed.
Do we need a recommendation?
Oh, yes, we do. I'm sorry, was there a committee meeting today?
Yes, there was a committee meeting today, and the Health and Public Safety Committee meeting met today and recommends this favorably to the full council.
Thank you. That was going way too fast.
Thank you.
Go ahead, please.
Members of the council, South Bend community members gathered here today, first and foremost, Happy Earth Day. As part of our presentation, we thought it might be helpful to give kind of a high-level overview of the flow of the legislation that we are considering tonight as council on your behalf as a community. However, though, before I go into that, and the folks who will help me with that are the two council members that are co-sponsors, but I do want to acknowledge that it has been truly collaborative on behalf of the council and the community as a whole and within the public record here forevermore for the city of South Bend. On the cover of this resolution is a cover letter that actually expressly calls out individuals who were very instrumental in the process. So you know who you are, and in the interest of time, I'm not going to read all of those out, but I would ask you to stand up if you have been a part of the collaborative effort to bring this forward to the council tonight.
Good. All stand.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Without your support and your input, we would not be here at this point tonight. Also, just a couple of things to point out. The resolution itself is very long. It's considerably long for most resolutions that this council passes. It is so because we want it to be educational as to the science of climate change, the impacts for our community, and in response to actually lift up the global call to action to reduce carbon emissions. Second, we wanted to recognize the various efforts that have happened already in our community relative to this issue, and the pathway has been rich in terms of the administration's leadership, both under Mayor Pete Buttigieg and then also Mayor Steve Licky, as noted in the resolution, and then most actively under the Office of Sustainability. And there is one individual whom I had asked to stand up now, and that would be Teres DeRoe, the director of that. Thank you very much. As far as our, one of our primary hopes as co-sponsors and as we sign this, support this tonight, is we want it to be a model, a pathway for other communities throughout the city or throughout Indiana and perhaps throughout the region to look to it, look at the process, the educational process that front-loaded this, the informed collaborative effort between our community, our science, our institutions, our amazing academic institutions, and the work of council and the work of administration. Working together, we can make change. And I want to say that again, and in response to the students and the young individuals, working together, we can drive and make change. So thank you very much. So just kind of a high-level road trip, very briefly, if you would indulge me. The first two sections of this resolution, the whereas statements, first deal with the science of climate change. The third and fourth deal with the impacts of climate change, and those are both global and then also here at the South Bend level, informed by Indiana University, Purdue University, the University of Notre Dame. So our local experts helping inform us as a council and working with us as a community to move this forward. The fifth section, and I do want to emphasize this, so this will, I believe, be the only section that I will read from the whereas statements. Later on, my council co-sponsors will be reading the resolve sections, but the fifth section, whereas these and other impacts will not be equally distributed, communities that already face socioeconomic and health inequities, whether around the world or here in our community, will be most severely impacted, including youth, seniors, people of color, and low-income populations. I wanted to highlight that. As a council, we are aware of that, and as we move forward on subsequent actions that will follow this, that will be foremost in our mind. The sixth and seventh section address the primary duties of cities and their primary role in ensuring public health, safety, and welfare of our residents, both now and in future generations. And cities are uniquely empowered with our ability to directly influence activities that impact climate, such as energy use in homes, our buildings, transportation network, and by promoting sustainable development. I'm gonna go back just quickly. The resolution has, the next section deals with the two joint committee hearings. I want to expressly thank Councilmember Teshka, who chairs the Utilities Committee. His willingness to get on this early and to really lift this up amongst two committees, I think that was, at least in my tenure, that's the first time we've ever had joint committees. So. The fifth section, and I do want to emphasize this, so this will, I believe, be the only section that I will read from the whereas statements. Later on, my council co-sponsors will be reading the resolved sections. But the fifth section, whereas these and other impacts will not be equally distributed, communities that already face socioeconomic and health inequities, whether around the world or here in our community, will be most severely impacted, including youth, seniors, people of color, and low-income populations. I wanted to highlight that. As a council, we are aware of that, and as we move forward on subsequent actions that will follow this, that will be foremost in our mind. The sixth and seventh section address the primary duties of cities and their primary role in ensuring public health, safety, and welfare of our residents, both now and in future generations. And cities are uniquely empowered with our ability to directly influence activities that impact climate, such as energy use in homes, our buildings, transportation network, and by promoting sustainable development. I'm going to go back just quickly. The resolution has, the next section deals with the two joint committee hearings. I want to expressly thank councilmember Tejka, who chairs the Utilities Committee. Here's a willingness to get on this early and to really lift this up amongst two committees. I think that was, at least in my tenure, that's the first time we've ever had joint committees. So I think in some ways, we elevated it by both looking at it from a health and public safety standpoint, but then also from our utilities. And then expressly as part of the process, we tied in one of our lead councilmember, I'm sorry, not to offend, I probably shouldn't have said that, but our lead councilmember, Karen White, who has been a strong proponent of our very robust, interactive budget process for the council on an annual basis. So under her leadership as chair for our finance, Personnel and Finance Committee. So thank you, councilmember White. And then, and those statements are to highlight Karen's strong leadership, but in no way to diminish the work of anyone to my left or to the right, or the members who are not present tonight. Everybody lives hard on this council, and those committee, the budget process, which we will be kicking into come July, over 15, 20 meetings that we all sit in and make sure that our tax dollars are spent in wise ways. The last, or the going further on to the whereas, it was important for us to include the opportunities that can be presented by climate action and taking climate action, and I just want to highlight some of those. Improve our air quality, our mobility, our public health, social equity, energy independence, and energy security, and the quality of our natural environment, as well as serve to attract jobs and economic development opportunity and increase our long-term competitiveness. Action on climate change supports the development of a livable, sustainable city with a strong economy and high quality of life. Action can also improve resilience in face of climate change and other challenges. The resolution then goes into the past actions of mayors, our Office of Sustainability, and the council. And then, as we jump to Section 12, we actually acknowledge almost a year ago to the date, Mayor Pete Buttigieg signed the Global Covenant of Mayors for Climate and Energy, pledging us to implement policies and to undertake measures to reduce and limit greenhouse emissions, to prepare for the impacts of climate change, to increase access to sustainable energy, and to track progress of these policies and measures in meeting or exceeding the Paris Agreement objectives. So our pathway has been long, and I'm excited tonight as a council to put forth this resolution. I do want to recognize one other member in tonight's audience. I saw him walk in. This is a councilmember who brought this to my attention over 14, maybe 15 months ago. Randy Kelly, if you could please stand up. Thank you very much. So now what we'll do is just kick into the heart of tonight's resolution, beginning with councilmember White. If you would please read the first resolved and the second resolved statement.
Prior to reading the two resolves, I would like to personally thank our councilwoman Joe Broden for doing the heavy lifting. Amazing job, and the other councilmembers as well. I really liked the statement that you made that working together, we can bring about change. And I think that this is an excellent example of a number of individuals from various walks of life and coming together to work on this critical issue. I started my journey in regards to becoming more aware and more involved about a year ago, when I was invited to go to the Robinson Center, and a group of young individuals, they did their presentation. I left that meeting energized and just overwhelmed. And so I want to give all the young people a round of applause. The future of South Bend is in great hands. Now I'll read the resolves. Therefore be it resolved, the South Bend Common Council hereby supports the city administration's current Q2-Q3 2019 initiative to develop a climate change plan that specifies climate actions most impactful in South Bend. Identifies ambitious but achievable greenhouse gas reduction goals customized to South Bend, including both immediate internal actions and long-term programs and policies, and outlines appropriate timelines for implementing the climate action and achieving the greenhouse gas reductions. And therefore be it resolved, the South Bend Common Council requests this plan be completed by the fall of 2019, and the administration planning process include appropriate stakeholders' feedback. Consider council administration priorities, including but not limited to opportunities for climate action to increase social equity, maximizing benefits, and minimizing impacts on individuals and businesses, and consideration of any action through the lens of the triple bottom line. This proposed that we slow the pace of climate change in ways that save money, build a better quality of life for our residents, and drive economic growth.
Therefore be it resolved, and to this end of triple net returns, the South Bend Common Council will look to support the administration's current and future internal policies and community-focused measures to reduce greenhouse emissions. Accordingly, council will respond to administrative proposals, act to adopt proposed plans, goals, targets, and measures as appropriate, including the consideration of a local ordinance or ordinances by the end of 2019, and to ensure adequate funding and staffing for adopted operational climate and community priorities. Therefore be it resolved, the South Bend Common Council also sets henceforth that the administration create an iterative process of setting goals, tracking progress, and reporting. Specifically, council and the community will be provided annual progress reports on the climate action plan, well in advance of the budget process, planning process. Both the municipal greenhouse gas inventory and community greenhouse inventory will be updated every three years, and the climate action plan updated on a three-year cycle.
Therefore be it resolved, council will seek opportunities to demonstrate climate leadership in Indiana, throughout the Midwest, and in our own community. It will also support the work of the Office of Sustainability and the administration in doing the same, including collaboration with other government entities and agencies, assisting and engaging community stakeholders and through public-private partnerships. These relationships and activities will be essential to the design, the funding, the implementation, and dictation of our community's climate action plan goals. Therefore be it resolved that this council commits itself today and strongly urges future members of the South Bend Common Council, our mayor's office, and our citizenry to remain engaged in and committed to climate action. Working together, we can confront what has been considered one of the greatest challenges of our time in proactive and strategic ways that benefit our community, our country, and our world. Having read, kind of been the high tour of the resolution, I would ask two members, staff members, please to come forward. Teraz DeRoe from the Office of Sustainability, and Jamie Morgan on behalf of the mayor's office. And then, I'm sorry, Genevieve Miller, I'm sorry. Thank you. And then, before you begin your comments, if I could kindly ask that the three handouts that were entered into the public record in committee could also be entered into tonight's record. And just a little bit of overview of that, there is a wonderful presentation. If Ty Babruki could stand up, that will be shared online henceforward. So thank you very much for your effort. We appreciate it. Councilmembers, elected officials, and department heads, as well as individuals who are candidates for elected office, will also be receiving shortly an invitation to attend a presentation at the Jordan Hall Digital Visualization Theater at the University of Notre Dame for additional information on this and specifically a program that was presented to international leaders on this issue. So we have the resources in our community. Councilmembers, and as I said, the individuals previously, will be receiving invitation to attend that presentation. And I would like to highlight Professor Phil, Dr. Sakamoto, Sakamoto in the crowd, please, if you could stand up. So look forward to that in our email boxes. And then, if I could also just direct, there's been a tremendous amount of information entered into the public record on this. Under the council's webpage, under the portion that is referred to as council initiatives, so if you're here first tonight on this issue, or if you've been here throughout and just want to see your name in the public record, I encourage you to visit the council initiatives section of the website. And I would also like to highlight the work of the clerk, and as they leave. But the members of the clerk's office have been instrumental in creating that record, and it'll be a nice opportunity for education going forward. If I might, ladies, thank you.
Name and address, please.
Teraz DeRoe, Director of the Sustainability Office, with offices on the 13th floor of this building. Happy Earth Day, Happy Dingus Day. The Sustainability Office has successfully collaborated with the Common Council on a number of initiatives in the past few years, including council support for energy-saving projects in city facilities, council support for Solarise South Bend, a program to lower market barriers for residents wishing to go solar, and co-authoring the Cleaner Energy Resolution under the leadership of councilmember Oliver Davis and former member Dave Barner. Additionally, council has supported other projects with clear climate benefits, investing in alternative fuel vehicles, green stormwater infrastructure, technologies that avoid wasted resources, and new city buildings being built to the highest standards of performance. Each of these actions has incrementally shifted the conversation and created momentum in our community. Today, however, as climate change barges into the daily lives of South Bend residents, we see the challenges have grown more complex and more urgent. And so must our responses be more direct, more comprehensive, and more quickly implemented. The resolution, this resolution is a sensible next step for council that builds on those past actions while rising to the seriousness and immediacy of a changing climate. This thoughtful resolution was developed based on two public hearings on climate science and climate policy from local experts, citizen testimony and feedback, review of more than a dozen other communities' climate legislation, review of policy recommendations from well-respected associations of local government, and a desire to collaborate closely with the administration to develop goals and plans with the highest potential for success. This resolution will serve as a guidepost for future action by leaders on the council, leaders in the administration, and leaders in the community. Thank you to Mayor Pete Buttigieg for his strong commitment and leadership, to Eric Morvath, the many Sustainability Office advisors, our steadfast youth leaders, countless active community members, each of you, councilmembers, and past members and councilstaff for your tireless efforts to build a sustainable community where both our current and our future residents can thrive. Thank you.
Genevieve Miller, Deputy Chief of Staff, 916 South 31st Street. On behalf of the mayor, I want to thank the Common Council for convening two public meetings and sponsoring this resolution. You've done more than spotlight the importance of climate action. You've demonstrated a clear commitment to seeing the work through. I also want to thank Teraz DeRoe for your diligent work year-round as Director of Sustainability. Your efforts have guided the city towards a brighter future by overseeing projects like installing downtown electric vehicle chargers, building two LEED-certified fire stations, joining the Global Covenant of Mayors, and improving our public green spaces. Climate action remains a mayoral priority, and thanks to strong coordination between the council and the administration, we're living that commitment out each day. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Broden, anything else from your presentation?
Well, access to just ask for a favorable vote.
Well, that's a good ask. Councilmembers, are there any questions for the presenters right now? Or anybody, anything else?
Well, I would just like to reiterate something that I said in committee, and that is, that I think, well, first of all, I think it's important for this to be bipartisan, which is, you know, there's only one option here, so.
No pressure.
No pressure, no pressure. Secondly, I think that there are many folks in our community, in our state, in our country who might fall somewhere outside of the spectrum, and we talked about this in committee, but some folks who might say, look, I don't know whether our actions are contributing to climate change, or whether this is a cyclical thing, or what effect this is. And I think it's important to say that we can find common ground just by way of the fact that we share this space, right? The fact that we share this planet. And I think that this is something, this resolution is something that people from all different kind of mindsets and starting points can get behind and say, yes, we can do a better job as a city, as a community, in the way that we care for our planet and the things that we do. And so I would just invite those who maybe look at this, the title of this resolution and kind of the things that we've been talking about, and maybe instinctually have a fearful reaction to please embrace this, embrace this process as we move through this. And again, this is a process, right? And so there will be further debate down the road in terms of actual policy and ordinances and the things that we do from here. And so we can certainly have a much more robust debate on that, but I think that this is something that, together as a community, whether you're Republican, Democrat, Independent, or somewhere, somewhere else on the spectrum, this is something that we can get behind and say, we want to have a better, cleaner community for our children, our grandchildren, and those that come afterwards. And secondly, maybe that's started, sorry. Thirdly, I've been, I've heard a couple of times through this process, what is South Bend, what is Little South Bend, 103,000 people, going to do about climate change? And you have actors like China in the world, right, putting out all of these emissions and all of these things. And I'd say to those folks that, you know, with that type of mentality, nothing would get done ever in this world, right? I mean, there has to be communities like ours, people who take that first step or that second step, that build on that momentum for any movement, any good thing to get done. It's not easy, but it's worth accomplishing. We have to take a step out in faith and do what we can do and do the things that we have power over. And so I would ask council for their favorable vote on this resolution. I'm very excited.
As a co-sponsor, again, it was my honor to be so. I would like to thank the Office of Sustainability. Teraz, that overview really was so important because it also pointed to the work that had been done up until this point. So I really appreciate that and all the work that has gone before and the work that will be coming before us. I would also like to recognize former councilmember Randy Kelly, because this was, he had a passion to ensure that we will be moving forward, so I thank him as well. I would like the audience to bring their attention to one of the information that we placed in our record, and that is the Indiana Environmental Reporter. And it talks about, it was a poll that was taken, and a large majority of our Huger state believe that they believe in climate change. And so it points to a number of important statements, and this information will be on our website as well. Again, it's a great beginning, and we will continue to move forward. I appreciate the timelines that are in the resolution, because on Wednesday of this week, we will be actually starting the budget process. And so the timing and everything that will go forward is very, very important, and we will ensure that we will meet those timelines and those targets. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank the co-sponsors for the comments. For the rest of the council, any questions at this time? Seeing none. Okay, we will open up to the public. This is a time where the public can come up and speak. You're given five minutes per comment or per person. I will time you. I will time you, or do you want to do that, Jim? All right. Jake Teshka will time you. He'll give you a warning, about 30-second warning before you go out. If you come up, please make comments. We will ask you to state your name and address, and if you could, please be original. If there's any comment you hear that you agree with, you can raise your hand, and we will note that agreement to that comment. We're looking for original statements here. There is a clipboard with a sign-up sheet. If you would, for the record, put your name and address on that sheet. You can do that before or after you make a comment, which is fine. Thank you. With that, five minutes, yep, please state your name and address and go.
Good evening. My name is Julia McKenna. I live at 410 Peachtree Street here in South Bend, and I'm a senior at John Adams High School. The South Bend website opens with a statement, "We deliver services that empower everyone to thrive." It begins with a promise to citizens that the purpose of our government is to ensure the flourishing of our community. What does it mean, then, for us to be a sustainable city? Climate change is the antithesis of this opening value statement. It does nothing but bring environmental destruction, poverty, disease, extinction, and terror. No citizen will be able to thrive in a world that is ravaged by preventable disaster. How, then, can our city be effective in achieving any of our goals if we do not take aggressive steps to combat climate change? Being a young person on the tipping point of the climate crisis feels a bit like starting a board game late and not being given all the pieces, like everyone else started with power-ups and money and time that I was not allowed it, allotted. As a 17-year-old, for my entire life, I have watched many elected leaders play with such a crisis as though it is nothing more than a game. But how is there any justice in playing a game where not everyone has a fair start? How is it fair to deny children a future that is livable purely because of an inability and unwillingness to acknowledge science and implement sustainable measures? I am here today for the third time, asking you not only to support this resolution as a first step in South Bend's legislative path to climate resilience, but as part of a larger plan that will make South Bend on the right path to preparing for and mitigating climate change and its effects. In 1988, James Hampton testified before the U.S. Senate about the dangers of climate change. I was born in July of 2001. In the 13 years between this testimony and me, nothing significant changed. And in the 17 years since then, still, nothing significant has changed. I have grown up in a world watching everyone else play with the pieces of a future that I will be the one to live out. So I'm asking you today, whether you do it in the name of science, or justice, or responsibility, or politics, to please sign this resolution. We need this and so much more in order to make our city thrive. Thank you, and it's been such an honor to work on this project in our credible city for the last five years.
Thank you. Next, name and address.
Hi, my name is Jennifer Betts. I live at 2315 Roosevelt Road. I'm part of two groups, the Environmental Network of Northern Indiana and the Open Space and Agriculture Alliance, but I'm here on my own this evening. So we're very excited for all the hard work that's been done and want to thank everyone in the room for all the effort you have put in, and especially for the young people who have shown us that change is possible, and sometimes we just have to keep working. So thank you. I would like to encourage the council to pass this as a favorable resolution. I think it's a wonderful step forward for our city, and the possibilities are exciting. I think the point that I really wanted to maybe talk about is when you talked about climate leadership. I feel like on the council, you're in a really unique position in that you are common council members, so you're elected officials, but you are also citizens. And you also have elected officials who represent you. And I'm here, and I wanted to say something, because we have a county economic development director who was quoted in the South Bend Tribune on February 10, 2018, and actually said, "We will continue to chase smokestacks." And if this is the kind of thinking that's happening at the county level, no matter what the city does, there's still going to be these greater forces. And Mr. Teshka spoke out really well about the fact that we have to start small, but we have to keep pushing up. And you all are in such an amazing, if you pass this resolution tonight, to take that forward to the county, to the commissioners and to the council, and say, this can't just stay in South Bend, this has to go bigger. And so I wanted to ask for both the favorable resolution, but also in joining us and trying to keep pushing this up and making a world in which everyone has a fair part, as Julia so beautifully said. So thank you.
Thank you. Name and address.
Hi, I'm Laura Dosso Walls. My address is 17120 Killarney Court in Granger, Indiana. So I speak as Professor Philip Sakamoto's collaborator and co-instructor in the original Notre Dame course in sustainability that originally drafted this proposal. And I can't tell you what it means to me to see, over two years later, that this proposal has finally come to a vote through all the efforts of so many of the people who are here today. I'm, I can't say strongly enough how important addressing climate change is to the future of all of us individually and collectively, for all the reasons articulated in our accompanying report. Action taken now by the Common Council will not only encourage a citywide ethic of care for our environment and for each other, it will set South Bend apart as a truly national leader, a dynamic city on the front lines of the future. I want to add that in designing our original proposal over two years ago, Professor Sakamoto and I carefully weighed whether to research and propose a non-binding resolution, which seemed easier, or a binding ordinance, which seemed like a heavy lift. We did agree that a binding ordinance was the best pathway, because we have no time to lose. Even Tom Friedman wrote last week in the New York Times, "Because for the environment later will be too late. Later is officially over. The window for effective action is closing too fast. The science is clear. Climate scientists worldwide speak with one voice. The consequences of inaction or of insufficient action are already devastating and will soon be much worse. Action taken now can help prevent the worst-case scenarios from becoming the reality our grandchildren face every day, a reality the students in our class today will inherit from us as the inevitable consequence of the physical and political infrastructure that we are creating today." Given this, I'm all the more grateful that the South Bend Common Council is bringing to a vote real action for climate recovery, and I urge you to vote in favor of this resolution. Further, I also urge you to agree to revisit the climate resolution as proposed at the end of 2019 and consider upgrading it to an ordinance. Only the force of law, not the however well-meaning wishes of a resolution, will catalyze the system-wide change we absolutely must generate, change that none of us individually, no matter how dedicated, can generate alone. I thank you all for taking so seriously your responsibility to give our children and grandchildren a real chance at a livable world. Thank you.
Thank you. Name and address, sir.
Hi, my name is Zachary Veezy. I live at 56828 Hollywood Boulevard. I just want to start out by saying that the, I am so grateful that the council is voting on this. I am grateful for the actions that are being taken today, and I hope that you all vote in favor for it. However, while it is a great start...
You're all right, keep going.
It's an expressed commitment by the city and council to support climate change work, but there needs to be institutional change. The city should be looking to amending the tax abatement ordinance in such a way that businesses only receive tax breaks if they solarise their business investing green technologies or invest in the green initiatives in the city. I think that this is progress, but there needs to be more done, because I am currently living in a world where I'm not sure if I should be having children, because honestly, what's the point if there could be an inevitable apocalypse within my lifetime? Thank you.
Thank you. Happy Earth Day, Dingus Day. My name is Steve Francis. I live in 454174 Judy Lake Drive, South Bend, Indiana. I'm speaking on behalf of the nation's largest environmental organization, the Sierra Club. I'm an elected member of the State Board of Directors and live here locally. On behalf of our 10,000 members in Indiana and more than 1,000 in the Michigan area, some of whom are in the audience, I support wholeheartedly this resolution. I commend you and thank you for putting this together, especially the hard work of the three co-sponsors and Councilor Broden. Thanks for your hard work and all of the people that have come, especially the kids and the students who have shown that they care about their future, and we should too. Climate change is real. It exists. It's human-caused. We are all part of the problem, and thus we all have to be part of the solution. If we're going to set up a future that our next generations can follow, can live in in sustainable ways, then we've got to act now, and I commend you in terms of the resolution as it's stated. Last fall, the Sierra Club was involved in the integrated resource planning of the utilities in our northern Indiana area. NITSCO made a major announcement, which shook the utility world in Indiana, as well as made national news, in terms of they are going to retire their old fossil fuel plants earlier than scheduled, and they're going to replace it entirely with renewable energy. I hope that we can, this year, do the same in terms of our utility, Indiana-Michigan Power, which you played a role in terms of persuading and coaxing to retire the Rockport Coal Plant in southern Indiana, which Sierra Club has been involved in a consent decree for a dozen years or so. I can't speak to that right now, but there is news coming on that front. I hope that you will play a role in the future in making sure that our utility provides clean, reliable, renewable energy and electricity for the city of South Bend. And on a personal note, I installed solar last year as a result of our Sustainability Directors' programs and Solarise, a program by community participants, to roll out and to build solar in the South Bend area. And I can say wholeheartedly, if anybody tells you, "We don't have enough sun in Indiana, we don't get enough sun in northern Indiana," I can tell you today, April 22nd, I completed all of my, produced enough power for all of my consumption for the month of April, and from now on, I'm banking that power to save for the winter, so that over the course of the year, I have a net-zero home. The city can do the same. I think that look at the upcoming budget as an investment in our future. It's going to cost money. You're going to need a site in the city government, which I think has been ably staffed by Teraz Dero, and to have a Sustainability Office that can drive some of the initiatives forward and throughout the next dozen years or 20 years that we need to tackle this problem. Think of any money that you spent in energy efficiency, in retrofitting buildings, in building solar on all of our municipal buildings, on top of the parking garages, as an investment in the future, and a return, as it's stated in the resolution, a triple bottom line return to the city in the future of reduced energy costs, as well as reducing operation costs as you go forward. So thank you for your support. I hope you all vote for it. I hope we get unanimous and resounding support forth tonight, and I thank everybody for showing up to show that the citizens of South Bend care about our future. We want our city to be forward-thinking, to show that it's on the cutting edge of new technologies, and that will also bring those green technology businesses to our city in the future and produce a solid tax base and a green economy for South Bend. So thank you very much. Appreciate your...
Hello, I'm Phil Sakamoto from the University of Notre Dame. I teach in the first-year studies program, the Sustainability minor. And on the basis of a decade and a half in the executive branch of the federal government, I used to be a program manager for NASA, I have a sense of what you're going through here in getting this together. So first of all, I really want to commend the council, Ms. Dero, especially Councilmember Broden, and Council, former Councilmember Kelly, because it's clearly put a tremendous amount of effort into this. You didn't just write a bare-bones resolution and toss it out there, but you thought it through extremely carefully, put in a specific things to do, which I think would be great, and I just really commend you for doing that. Secondly, as you go into your budget deliberations this week, I ask you to please bear in mind the fact that the city of South Bend has a tremendous resource in Teraz Dero.
Some hands work.
She can't do this alone. Let's get her the resources she needs to have a support staff so she can carry out this mandate. And the third thing is, we've been hearing about over and over how climate change, the biggest impacts of climate change around the world, the low-income residents in our city, the people of color. And we keep hearing about the fact, which is true, that when we do the right thing for climate, we invariably also do the right thing for improving our economy, creating new jobs. Communities throughout this country, the world, have experienced that when they really start to invest in climate mitigation, their economy booms. And invariably, we make for a healthier community, because we reduce air pollution, we eat healthier, we do some of our transportation by walking and bicycling, and so everybody wins. But what I haven't seen, and which I'm really looking forward to South Bend showing the world how to do, is to make sure that these benefits of taking care of our climate accrue to the people who need them the most. I'm really glad, really glad to see that there's a representative from our local labor unions in the room tonight, because that's another piece of puzzle that needs to be here, says we shift to renewable energy economy. We see that the new jobs created, take care of the people who are leaving the old jobs and the old economy, to see that the economic benefits accrue to the people who really need them in this community. And if South Bend can pull this off, which I really think it can, it's going to set an agenda for cities all over this country and all over the world. Because I haven't seen before a blueprint coming out of any community that shows how the benefits of mitigating climate change come to the people who need them the most. We have an opportunity in this community to make that happen, and I think that's the big challenge going forward. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Jay Paul from, Jay Paul Lee from 2930 Bombs Avenue, South Bend, Indiana. And the resolution was written pretty well. At the beginning, it states about how human activity contributes to global warming, but probably started out right from the beginning, state the number-one cause of climate change. And this number-one cause causes more climate change on our planet than every single automobile, airplane, train, and boat on the entire globe. And this number-one cause of climate change is factory farming of animals and growing of animals for human consumption. And this factory farming of animals is the number-one cause, but it creates up to 30% more climate change than all the automobiles, airplanes, trains, and boats on the globe. So if that could be factored in, South Bend would be a little bit more ahead of these other communities and bring a little bit more honor to us. Also, today's Earth Day, so to honor the earth, perhaps in this resolution, we could also state and bring honor to South Bend, work in for a complete cessation of the butchering of the Brazilian rainforest. The Brazilian rainforest is being cut down, number one, to grow soybeans, to feed factory farming, and number two, they're butchering these forests to graze cows. So South Bend could take a lead amongst all these communities, and it'd be an honorable lead to at least mention a cessation of the Brazilian rainforest butchering. And thank you very much.
Thank you.
Bill Strance, 1818 South Olive Street. The only question I have is, almost every environmentalist complains about the pollution in the air. I've yet to understand how the city of South Bend can tie up traffic on days, every day, when people are getting out of work or going into work. For instance, if you go down Lincoln Way around 3:30 or so in the afternoon, the traffic is backed up from downtown South Bend almost all the way to the airport, bumper to bumper, going from one stoplight to the next stoplight, and very seldom do you get more than maybe three or four cars through a stoplight at a time. I would like to know how you can claim that this is good for the environment.
Thank you.
You also have the same problem going north and south, and you have problems on most of the smart streets that are in the outlining areas. Thank you.
Thank you, Bill. Name and address, sir?
My name is Malachi Dotson. My address, 106 East Campus Street. I want to talk about how earth is suffering from climate change, especially littering, people like throwing trash outside their windows or just like throwing wrappers and stuff, which affects the animals. Animals need like water, places to live also. So, city actions on climate change is important to keep our earth clean and make it a better place. Thank you, city.
Thank you.
My name is Missyara Hopkins, 226 Miss Malcon Street. I just want to talk about climate change. It's also decreasing the population of our important species of animals also, and also like they're also really important as well. And you know, also another important thing about climate change is smoking cigarettes. It's causing a lot of pollution and is messing up the air for like the animals to breathe and for us and for the people that have asthma. So, I think that maybe we should stop or ban cigars from now on. And yeah, thank you.
Thank you. Good job.
Hi, I'm Jackie Brebek. I live at 1855 Van Ness Street, and I really just want to say how happy I am. I don't know if you guys saw, but when I was sitting here, just hearing this be read out loud, hearing all the council members' comments, and seeing how much dedication has been put into writing this resolution, and how much dedication is to come in the resolution, has just been making me smile right up here. And I hope you can see it, because it's thanks to you guys that I'm smiling like this. And I love to see the dedication. I love to see the timeline, and this is a huge undertaking, as many people have mentioned, making it inclusive, covering many sectors, transportation, food. But I see the dedication and I see the clear timeline in the resolution, and that makes me just really happy. So, I heard enough serious stuff from me at the other meetings, so I thought I would just say that today. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Beth Sanford. I'm at 1013 North St. Peter Street, South Bend. One, thank you. Happy Earth Day, and also Happy Dinosaur Day. One, I want to thank you all for, especially the three council persons, for putting together this resolution. I myself, I'm an architect, and way back in college, like late 80s, early 90s, I studied sustainable design, as well as I worked for the Center for Energy Research and Educational Studies, and way back then, climate, at that time, global warming was a huge thing. Now, the climate change, and within that timeframe, it's only gotten from, it's just gotten worse. And I think that this resolution and looking at future budgets, it'll open up doors to also start to look at how we do economic development and growth in the city, within, not only within the city, areas that are already zoned to be light industrial, that we could start bringing in businesses and looking at green, least certified buildings, and as we start to look at how we can create, like give tax abatements to companies that have, need a certain criteria to be able to design and build our buildings that are least certified, as well as it could open up the doors to other practices that the government uses, whether it's like cycling on a larger basis or in other areas, more provide money for more fuel, you know, refuel trucks and et cetera. So, anyways, I applaud you for doing this, and I look forward to what this may bring in the future, especially for me.
Thank you.
Jason Benicki-Critzlow, 3822 Ford Street. I've spent years here coming advocating for protecting our parks, whether it was River Park, when they went into, you know, neighborhood, when they went to build the new fire station there at Potawatomi Park, or when it was when we tried to sell off Alville Park and protect it. Well, it doesn't do us a lot of good to protect those parks if we don't protect the environment with which we have to enjoy those parks. So, I think this is an absolute must. I also think, you know, it's easy for us to get lost in the abstract of this, but I think it's important to remember that we faced some very real consequences of climate change in South Bend over the last few years, with 100-year storm and a 500-year storm. So, we've had people have, lose their homes, you know, have significant damage to their homes. So, we're not just talking about an abstract concept, but a very real issue that we're dealing with on a regular basis here anymore. So, it's not just, you know, a thought, it's a reality for a lot of people. I want to give credit to all the young folks that came up here today and spoke. I know how sometimes it can be very intimidating to get in front of a large room to speak, so I think they all deserve a round of applause for that. And I just want to finish the saying, as I want to up here. Don't let the pursuit of perfection be the enemy of progress when it comes to this. We need to get this done. We need to get it done today.
Thank you.
Good evening. Randy Shivas, Executive Director of Southwest Management District of San Joe County, offices at 828 Currie Street in South Bend. For those who don't know, the Southwest Management District is the fancy legislative name for the county's recycling program. We participate, or the city participates, in our curbside recycling program, where we divert over 23 million pounds per year on average from our local landfill. That's good, that that's recycled and all. But also, probably one of the bigger environmental impacts that we offer is our household hazardous waste disposal facility, where people can bring things from anything like acid, mercury containing products, pesticides, old motor oil, antifreeze, combustible old stains and that kind of thing. Where last year, we took in over 1.2 million pounds through that program of things that in the past would always be either poured in alleys or down drains. This community, as I go around the state, I'm on our state association's board, is viewed as rather progressive compared to some of the others, some of my counterparts around the state. I'd love to be able to take this resolution in our next board meeting and say, "Now, take that, too." We have partnered, the district has partnered with city of South Bend, San Joe County, the Towne Ucalale, North Liberty, and actually the entire county for residents for our household hazardous waste facility over the years, the last, what, 28 years? If there's anything we could do to assist, and I know Teres DeRoe, too, if anything we could do to assist, we would be happy to. On a personal note, I also want to say that several of you know that I spent several years sitting up there as a county council member. I do not recall a time that we ever spent nine council members, so much time together that we came up with something that just many people came and said, "Yes." I applaud you for that. If we would have done that, I would have eaten a lot less Snickers, and we would have not been passing around a bottle of Tylenol. So, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Hi, how you doing? My name is Joshua Kudop. I live at 17727 Tanner Gilane, South Bend, Indiana. I'm the senior at San Joe. I just want to, you know, when, when we are in school, right, and we see a kid getting or a person getting bullied, we are supposed to step in and help that, help that person, right? This person that's getting bullied right now is the earth. And when we bully the earth, a lot of things could affect, such as, you know, deforestation, all these species that are being, are going extinct every single day. And I just want to thank everyone in this room, and you council members, for being the person who stepped in and stopped this bullying from happening to this earth that it can't speak for itself. The earth cannot speak for itself. We have to be, we have to speak for the earth. And I just want to thank you for, for passing this ordinance, and this ordinance will go down in history as being the momentum builder, the momentum starter for re, for, you know, re, re, retuning our carbon emissions and technos back. I just want to thank you so much. So, thank you so much.
Thank you.
I'm Adam, Adam Missouri, 14334 Shoreline Drive, Granger. I would like to say that, first off, I hope many of you are familiar with Union Gardens. I was listening to the things many people said tonight, and I thought Union Gardens is like a perfect example of how that's being implemented in our community right now. It has like an effect on people, providing them healthy, fresh food, while also like limiting, let's say, CO2 from, instead of food being driven from to Florida, California, it's grown right here. I think it'd be very cool if, within this resolution, we could maybe follow the model of Union Gardens, or at least often support. I think it'd be pretty cool if they were funding like Union Gardens. But I think that'd fit the school perfectly, and thank you.
Thank you. This will be our last call.
Good evening. Diana Mendelson, 20271 West Brick Road in South Bend. 31 years ago, Dennis Stanley, David James, and I organized the first Harbor Earth Day Festival at the Caltex Cultural Center, and we traveled to many parks and over the years, remembering back when organic resources started, thanks to Loretta Duda and Bob Krasinski and other people. And then, of course, about eight, nine years ago, at Howard Park, it was determined that that year, the council members wanted to rebuild a newer and elite quality level South Bend care, animal care and control. So, it took a little longer to build that facility. It was built, and over the many years to come, the utilities will be much lower. So, those are very positive examples of past decisions that were made, and I'm looking forward to, my little niche will be to get the park department to not use a roundup and not use as many chemicals and that type of thing. And then also, and also, I'm a member of the Recycle Advisory Board, and just already a couple of weeks ago, and one thing I propose to that committee is to fund $1,000 for a matching grant. We need to have the schools collecting all the compostables from the lunchrooms. I work at a public school, and we throw away easily 10 tons of food a day. And there's a lot, there's a lot, a lot that we can be doing, so I'm excited about this resolution. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone wishing to speak against 1933, please come to the podium. Throw it.
No kidding.
Okay. With that, the public portion is closed. We'll turn it back to council for comment at this time, and we'll start with Regina Preston Williams. Williams, Preston. Sorry.
Just very quickly, thank you, of course, to everyone who worked on this. I want to highlight, my favorite part of this resolution is the timeline, is the action. So often, you know, we have good intentions as a council, and we'll sign resolutions, and we don't come back. And so, I think that we need to use this as a model moving forward, especially when it's such important issues, that we actually give ourselves, set a goal, to ensure that we meet that goal, and we're not just sending out good will, but we're actually taking action. So, thank you to the authors of this, and let's keep that moving forward.
Thank you. Ms. McBride.
I want to say thank you for Councilwoman Joe Broden for leading this charge along with administration, and to all of you community partners, especially to students. It is great to see the care of the young who will be highly affected by climate change. So, this is a great start for us. I love the collaboration and the partnership, and glad that we have finally taken a stand, you know, here and historically over the years of the start and the initiative that began. And always a great initiative, but it feels so good to finally come, to come to fruition and some action to be put behind it. So, thank you, everyone who has been involved in it, and we look forward to seeing it evolve.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The presenters make brief comments, since we've talked so much.
Yeah, I will be very brief. Just a deep gratitude for everyone who has helped bring this forward, and looking enthusiastically in the next few months, both in the budget process, that'll be very important going forward, to make sure we hit our goals and objectives on this, and set, you know, this for success in 2020. That's the budget that we'll be looking for. And then, just to also highlight that we've heard you in terms of ordinances, this is the first step. And the climate action plan that will immediately flow from this will direct this council, the administration, and future councils to three to five high-impact measures, goals, that we will all agree upon. Some of those can just take administrative action, some of them can be, will require council action in terms of ordinances. So, we, more to come is actually the very best, and quickly to say that. I do invite you, and I thank you for coming out tonight, but I also want you, it's imperative that you join us in moving this, moving this action forward, right? Again, budget talks begin next week. We finalize that November 1. As a council, you need to be there and present at all of those conversations. So, it's an invite, and it's a really heavy, lean ask. So, please, please join us in that very important process. Thank you all very much.
So, I pretty much said my piece earlier. Other than, other than, I do want to just thank Councilmember Broden, and I think I have received some undue credit here tonight. Councilman Broden did, I would say, all of the lifting here, and I was pretty much just a tag along. So, thank you for your work on this, your dedication, and just your passion for this issue.
I am resoundingly supportive of this resolution. It's a, it's a pleasure to be part of this, this process. It's action from, from you guys, from the, from the school folks, to the, to the educational institutions in this community, to develop an awareness amongst those of us who can, who you've entrusted to, to do something about problems that we face, to educate us, to get us to accept, one, that there is a problem, and that's a ways back, and, and two, that we can collectively do something about it. So, hopefully, as everyone said, this is a meaningful first step, and I'm, as long as I'm here, another six, seven months, eight months maybe, till the end of the year.
Sweet moment.
Yeah. I hope to be a part of, to join our hands with the rest of the council members and encourage those running for office to embrace these so important measures that, that we all profit by. The important thing is, it's not only important to the environment and to future generations, but I think we can dispel the notion that it's going to somehow handshackle the
but I think we can dispel the notion that it's going to somehow handshackle the economy. It's actually going to boost the economy as we get into this. And, so anyway, again, I resoundingly support this. As I said back in committee, there are three sponsors. The bulk of the work, I think the, the cosponsors will admit, has been coalesced by Teri, Terrence and, and Jo. But if it were allowed, I, I think it's safe to say all nine of us would have been cosponsors of this. We can't cosponsor something in a majority, or there wouldn't be any point in voting on it. So, anyway, just happy to be a part of the process and happy so many people are involved and, and hopefully continue to be, and I know you will be. So, thank you.
Thank you, Josh.
Yes, I'd make most of my comments early on, and I still stand by those comments. I would like to share with the public that the budget process will start this Wednesday, 6 o'clock at Century Center. This will be the time that the administration, the council members will be listening to you, the public. Most of the department heads will be there, and this is the first step in looking at the 2020 budget. So I would encourage those of you who can, if you can block out your schedule for this coming Wednesday, 6 o'clock, we'll be at the Century Center. You will be hearing from the administration and the council members in regards to how we have prepared for what is called a fiscal curve. At one time, it was called a fiscal cliff, and how we have really made preparation to address reduction in our property taxes and also other areas that will impact our income for the 2020 fiscal year. So again, we invite each and every one of you who can to come to the first budget kickoff, and the purpose of this meeting is to hear from our residents. We're there to listen and to learn from you as well. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Finally, my comments, and then we'll, we'll get to the vote that you're all waiting for. Two things, I appreciate Terrence, the conversation that we've always had. One thing that you might not know about me is I drive to Goshen every day to work for a green company where we literally turn 15 million pounds of plastics and entire rubber into car parts that then again, when the car wears out, can be turned back into more car parts. And I do that for a reason, because I'm dedicated to the green side of this world and trying to make an impact, and the company is there for that same reason, too, to make an impact where we can. We're literally taking water bottles, tide bottles and that and turning them into car parts. So there's plenty of companies out there doing that. If you want, please look up St. Louis in the 1930s. I grew up in St. Louis. At one point, they burned so much coal and wood and oil in the wintertime that during the winter, the air would just not move and the streets were completely dark. They had streetlights on, running lights on cars because it was so dark from the slit in the air. We're probably paying for that now, or what's going on. And this is the point that I brought up at committee of what Councilman Jake Testke said, is, is we all need to do our part. And at one point, they decided that wasn't good enough, they made a conscious effort to, to make that change. Google that, look up those photos. It's just horrifying to see what was going on, but they made a change, and we can make a change, too. And sometimes we look at, oh, everything great in technology and cutting edge has happened on the West Coast or somewhere other than here in South Bend. And what I love about this council, and we've done it over the eight years I've been on council, a lot of cutting edge and substantive, different ideas that have been taken from other places in the world, and doing it first in South Bend. And I'm proud of the fact that we've all done this. Jo, I appreciate your leadership on this, and Jake and Karen on this as well. It's, it's saying, why not? Why can we not do that here? And we need to have more courage to say, we don't care if we're in the Midwest, and we don't care if we're in a rusted up city, we're going to make a change, and we're going to do differently. And I appreciate everybody in this audience, just for that reason, for being here. When I first got on council, I toured the Century Center, and I was actually appalled that the lighting system was in a closet. The power was literally open, where you open a closet, and there was three-phase power live with no safety features, no door on it, and it was part of powering the Century Center, the light system. And it was, and literally, if you touched any of it, you would die. That's, that's how dangerous it was. And it was myself in this, well, a version of this council, actually saying, no, that's not good enough, and we can do better with the Century Center. And you look at what Century Center has become now. I mean, it's multiple strides in, in solar, green roof, technology, LED lights, replacing all that old technology, and it was really driven from this common council and bringing it up to the budget to, to say, that's not good enough, and we've made improvements. And you guys are part of it, we're doing it for the younger generation, too. We hear you. We hear the fact that we have to put more into what we're doing business-wise within the city to include sustainable energy sources and renewable where we can. And we're going to do that, and I'm committed to doing that as we go forward. So, I want to thank everybody for coming out. This is the most talking we've had at a council meeting in a long time. So, thank you all. With that, entertain a motion.
A motion to approve.
Second. Ms. Fowler, roll call.
Councilmember Broden.
Oh, my gosh.
Yes. Aye. Councilmember Testke.
Aye.
Councilmember Broden.
Aye.
Vice President White.
Aye.
Councilmember Preston.
Aye.
Councilmember McBride.
Aye.
President Scott.
Aye.
Seven ahs.
Thank you. Now, if you want to see the rest of democracy in action, we'll go ahead with the next couple of items, and this meeting will adjourn. So, at this time, we had no bills in the first reading. Is there any unfinished business from this council? Nope, seen none, any new business? Seen none. We'll move to the privilege of the floor. Privilege of the floor is where anybody can come up and speak about any topic that was not heard on the agenda tonight. You have three minutes, you need to state your name and address, you can talk about anything. Come on up. Bill, come on up. If you would, we're still having our meeting, so if you're going to leave, please go quietly. Thank you.
Bill Strance, 1818 South Olive Street. I own Bill's Body Shop. The mayor's secretary, I talked to her after the last meeting, she said she was going to look into my problem and talk to the city engineer. Took a day or two, I finally had the city engineer contact me that he was going to do something. That's been almost two weeks ago. He finally got back with me today after I talked to the mayor's secretary for the first time since the last time, and he evidently contacted the city engineer who said he's still studying it, and he's, they're going to do something. Now, he called me back and left a message on the phone that was at probably about 1:00, 1:30, I was out to lunch. I tried to call him back, I realized what today is, couldn't get any more responses. I'm going to be out of town from tomorrow morning until Saturday evening, so you probably won't have any more comments for me, and I won't be able to be around. So, if I don't hear any more, I guess, see you at the next council meeting. But I'm not, seems like I'm not getting very much response.
All right.
I also had Right-Away Jones get on me again today. He made his call from Fort Wayne. He's been after me to sign off on these papers. I did fax him a copy of the estimates for moving the fence back, also for paving the lot. I don't know what kind of paving they want. Also, I have a bill here for putting a guard fence for the dog that is in the shop to keep the dog in. I have estimates on all three of those. I faxed them down to him, he said he was going to fax them to the city, and that's as far as that got. So I don't know really to this point what's going on. Also, between the driveway that goes into the shop and the driveway that goes into the side lot, there is a 25-foot span there. I would appreciate it if he would put a, at least a place where you could take and pull a vehicle in there and unload it. We have stuff coming in from the suppliers, from dealers, and they always park in front of the shop, and they unload and bring the stuff in. When they get done, there will be no parking anywhere on the street. That's my problem. I appreciate what you can do, and hopefully we can get something resolved before too long. They're already out, they're marking the street off. And I guess they're ready to start tearing up stuff.
Okay, Bill, we'll, we'll get back to you on it.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Jason Medicki, 3822 West Ford Street. I won't be able to be at the budget kickoff Wednesday, so I think I'll start with one of my top priorities. As I've gone far and wide across all of the six districts, I've seen and heard one constant cry from my residents over there, and it's that they want to see a traffic division back in the police department. Every neighborhood deals with reckless driving, and we shouldn't have to wait till it results in the death of a child to say, hey, we used to have a traffic division, people drove slower when they got tickets. It's not, you know, brain surgery we're performing here. We have to find the resources for a traffic division to help improve residents' quality life.
Thank you. Next, name and address.
Hi, my name is Jennifer Betts. I live at 23150 Roosevelt Road, South Bend, Indiana. I really thank you for passing the resolution.
Can I talk about anything that was on agenda tonight?
Sorry, forgot that. Okay. Well, I came because I wanted just to say, because I think it has everything to, I'm here because right now the county is planning a 22,000-acre mega industrial complex on farmland. And it might seem like that's a county issue and not a city issue, except for it sits on our aquifer. It will increase lots of truck traffic, it will have a huge impact on the infrastructure. So I'm really concerned about it, and a lot of residents are really concerned about it. And the problem is, is that the other towns and cities in the county aren't really speaking up. And everyone here tonight, there was multiple people who talked about what economic development is supposed to be. And we can't fight climate change unless we have a new idea of economic development. There's been some wonderful talk by candidates about inclusive economic development, and I would say that has to actually be about human communities and non-human communities, and it has to be sustainable. And right now, if our economic development offices on the city and county level are not re-envisioning what economic development is, all of your hard work, it's not, it's not going to actually pay off. There are cities in the United States, Fort Collins, Colorado, where the economic development office actually sits under the sustainability office. It, it doesn't get to be separate, or it doesn't get to be on top of, it actually is underneath the sustainability office. There's so much that the city could do to really lead the way about economic development being for people and the planet and not just for profit. So I just ask you going forward that the city be a louder voice in these conversations because everything that's happening on the county level is intimately affecting us, not just through our air, but possibly water. So, thank you.
Thank you. Next name and address.
Judith Rubeleski, 515 South Mead Street, South Bend. Our county is, economic development is on a path that seems to have a lot of parallels west of us, in Will County, Illinois, where Joliet is, and Elwood. And there's a story in the New Republic magazine in January or February about Elwood and what happened in Elwood. Please read that. Look it up and read it. New Republic, yeah. Because the path that the economic development for the county development and around the airport, bringing all these warehouses and then smokestacks closer to Junior Collyl, is not the path that any of you would want to go on. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Seen none. Entertained motion adjourned. Don't move.
That's it.
All in favor? Aye. Good night, everybody.
Thank you.
You're not nice. Yep, so I thought Randy was going to start a talk, you know.
Good job. Okay.
Thank you.
Why are my pants on fire?
No, no, you guys are, I knew, I knew we were going to have, majority of it was going to be citizens. No, it was good job.
Good night, everybody.
Good night.
Who are you going to make your time?
No longer.